Hello, good evening. Welcome to the October 1st, 2024 School Committee Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live from Foxborough by Foxborough Cable Access. We're going to start tonight off with open public comment, which is on the agenda. I believe there is none, so we are going to move on to the second item agenda, which is approval of minutes. But unfortunately, we do not have minutes to approve. So we're going to go right into the main event, the Teaching and Learning Highlight, Taylor Elementary School National Blue Ribbon School. We'd like to invite Mr. Stanton and all the guests to come up and tell us all about
Well, good evening and welcome. Thank you for welcoming us tonight. We're very honored and excited to share an accomplishment, not just for Taylor School, but really for the Foxborough Public Schools and the town as well. We're going to start off with introductions. I'm Mike Stanton, the principal of the school.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sharon Roberts. I'm a kindergarten teacher.
I'm Jennifer Powers. I'm the math specialist.
I'm Noel Hendrickson, K-8 Math Science Curriculum Director.
I'm Deanna Collins, Reading Specialist.
And we have several other staff members as well in the back who are here with us. And this is truly, I wish we had a larger space because we could fit every single student, every staff member and family. We're excited today to talk about the National Blue Ribbon Award that Taylor School received. We're going to highlight what is actually the National Blue Ribbon School Award about, why Taylor School, some of the application highlights, the difference makers, and finally, what's next for us. So the National Blue Ribbon School Award Program is part of the U.S. Department of Education. They, since 1982, have worked to identify schools across the country that are performing at exemplary level. There could be opportunities for schools and communities to really be recognized for the hard work that they're doing and to be able to sort of see how those efforts can be replicated and shared across the country as well. This year, in 2024, there were, it's about 130,000 public schools and private schools in the United States of America. Taylor School, we were one of 356 schools that were recognized this year. That includes nine schools in Massachusetts. And it's interesting because it's not only elementary, middle, and high school, but it's also public and private schools as well that have this opportunity. There are two categories that schools can be identified and recognize for, exemplary high-performing schools and exemplary achievement gap-closing schools. Taylor School, we were designated as an exemplary high-performing school. This is based mostly upon our MCAS scores and our ability to meet some targets with our accountability projections. This map up here really highlights the demographics and across the country as well. It also includes Department of Defense Education Schools, the Virgin Islands. So it's, you know, for us to be included in this family, we're very fortunate and we feel excited to be a part of this. Last year at this time, Taylor School was identified as a school of recognition by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This was, once again, we achieved this status just based on the progress that we were making towards our annual accountability targets. And with an emphasis, at Taylor School, we've been fortunate where our scores for all of our students, but also our subgroups, are very similar. And sometimes we found even our subgroups outperformed our whole school average, which isn't common. Sometimes you might not see that across many schools. Last year, we were one of 66 schools named a school of recognition. What I didn't realize was this started to put us on the pathway to potentially being a blue ribbon school. At this point, I am going to ask Dr. Burrows, she talked a little bit about accountability targets. She loves to talk about accountability targets.
My favorite conversation. So the data that you see up here is our data from 2023. Our data from 2024 looks fairly similar. As Mr. Stanton had shared, we were identified as a school of recognition based on our 2023 scores. If you look at the bottom, the Taylor School made a, scored a 97%, okay? The scale for accountability ratings is 1 through 99. So our Taylor School scored a 97% last year. The way that they calculate that, if you think back to the way that MCAS accountability ratings used to happen, it used to be level one, level two, level three, level four schools. We no longer do that. It's just a rating scale from one to 99. That lands you in a certain percentile, and then school districts that are in a certain percentile end up falling on that list of a school of recognition. So 97% was our score. And then in this school year, we did receive an 82%. We were still in the 84th percentile during the 2023 school year. We were in the 87th percentile. In this current school year, we're in the 84th percentile. And essentially, what qualified us as the National Blue Ribbon School was a weighting system that the state had implemented that placed a 40% weight on our 2023 scores and a 60% weight on our 2024 scores. That gave us an overall rating of 82% and qualified us.
And it's interesting because one of the areas that actually from 2023 to 2024 that we went down was our chronic absenteeism rate. We didn't, 2023, we received four out of four possible points. Last year, this current year, we received zero out of four. And that was because we had more students pop up into that chronic absenteeism. So that's something, in a couple of weeks, the elementary school principals will be talking about opportunities in our school improvement plan to grow. And that's something that we're addressing at Taylor School and across the three elementary schools. And that sort of segues into, I think, the talk, what we're going to be doing is really talking about, this is not the culmination of our efforts, but just a celebration. And we're really excited to be inspired by this. Up on this slide, it really just shows the overview of the timeline, how this occurred. About a year ago, we received the school of recognition. In February, I told the PTO the other day, I actually almost deleted the email that invited us to be a National Blue Ribbon School. I wasn't sure what it was when it was in my mailbox. And what that said is that would we be interested in being considered one? And the state of Massachusetts identifies schools that they would like to nominate. So once we said yes, it went back and the state said, yes, we'd like to nominate you. That then sparked a lengthy application that I hope you've had time to review. It's on the website as well, but it's 19 pages. It took us well over 100 hours, probably close to 200 collectively when you look at our combined efforts and time. In June, we found out that we met all of the criteria for the application. In August, we had to wait our MCAS scores and to see if they were certified by the state, if we hit a certain threshold again, which we did. And then in September, we received the great news that we achieved the status. In November, we will be doing a couple of things. We'll talk about that a little bit later in our presentation about how we're going to be celebrating and the conference as well. So we're going to switch over to the difference makers.
So I think you can take a look at this slide and see that Taylor School is so much more than the students, the teachers, and the families. So many people that come together to actually make a difference at Taylor. You can see our specialists, our counselor, our nurse, our custodians. The biggest thing that I think that we have here at Taylor is that all teachers, day in and day out, all of us are teachers, even the custodian. They make a big difference in every student's life and each other's lives and the teachers and the staff. We have educational assistants, service providers, occupational therapists, speech pathologists. We are all here, all combined. It's so important that we make a point to talk about all the people that made this happen. Every day, we come together and work in big ways and small ways to support the growth of Taylor students.
And amongst those difference makers, you know, Mike said we could fill this room with our students and our teachers, but I think also our families. Our families have been the advocates for their children, but also our biggest supporters. And whether it's home practice or supporting us with strategies that we provide for them through Help Me Reach My Goals, our families are truly at the heart of this for us too. And at the heart of our families is our Taylor PTO. Our Taylor PTO brings joy to Taylor School. And we all feel that, the teachers feel that, our students feel that. They enrich our students with so many opportunities, but they also bring our families together and truly make Taylor School a community, neighborhood school. You can see also there the Foxborough, the town of Foxborough, our community. So we also share this with our firefighters, our police officers, our police officers who are standing out there on Friday mornings, high-fiving our students and saying, good morning, we see you, we value you, we are a part of your school. So all of those difference makers up there, and then on that last row, our curriculum coordinators, Noel and Karen, our director of student services, Corey, Rose, all of those people are a part of this with us. And there's one leader that isn't on this slide, and that's our Taylor School leader. So he didn't include himself.[669.57][669.57](LAUGHTER). Don't know how that got deleted, but we also need to recognize that our Taylor School leader has a leader that is a significant difference maker for the entire Taylor School community. He sets the tone and is a reason why we were able to achieve what we have.
You're not hitting the slide.
Not yet. We just want you all to know that it's important that Mr. Stanton has put systems and structures in place for us to be able to do our job. He spends countless, countless hours creating a schedule over the summer so that we can meet and collaborate. That's a really, really thing, a big thing you're going to hear over and over said here tonight. He creates those schedules that allow teachers to meet and problem-solve and collaborate. He's incredibly creative with that schedule and resourceful with that scheduling. He's our number one difference maker, and when he shines, we all shine. Now you can go.
If I had known that, I would have had them skip that.[733.32][733.32](LAUGHTER). But I will say, for me as a principal, I've been blessed to be in Foxborough Public Schools. When I was hired 13 years ago, Dr. Burdos at the time told me this is someplace over the rainbow. And, you know, while we have our challenges, we have so much to celebrate here. And it's not just at Taylor School. It's all five schools. We share, we collaborate, we work with one another. And when, up there at students, I do want to recognize it's not only our current Taylor School students, but I have to give a shout out to our students at the Hearn currently as well, who were a big part of this. They were the ones who took MCAS over the past few years and helped us to achieve this as well.
Mr. Stanton's right that collaboration doesn't exist just within Taylor's four walls. The district dedicates a lot of time for our teams to be able to meet together. We have district professional development time, regular monthly grade-level meetings. The literacy and math specialists and special educators meet across all three buildings. We have time within our cycle, every cycle, to get together, to share, to collaborate, and to problem-solve.
And just from the curriculum side, our team is constantly refining, updating all of our curriculum resources for the whole BIT community. We're very proud that we have a shared BIT experience in Foxborough for kids. We've built a curriculum that's articulated across all three buildings to give a consistent programmatic experience for all of our Foxborough kids. And so this graphic is a really great one.
I'm going to talk about the PTO, and it is my privilege to tell you about our amazing PTO. We at the Taylor are so fortunate to have such thoughtful families at our school who contribute and support the students and staff at Taylor. And I'd like you to know the names of these people. Victoria Augusta and Kathleen Manning are the co-presidents. Andrea Garcia is the vice president. Denise Buckowitz is the treasurer, and Teresa Tedesco is the secretary. And these women volunteer their time to make sure all the hard work of the PTO gets done. And then they make sure the fun doesn't stop there. As the PTO meeting ends, the fun doesn't stop, and they invite everyone at the meeting to join them at a local establishment so the fun can continue, which I think all PTOs should do, just to make things a little more entertaining. They ensure that all children are included in the celebrations. They fund onsite author visits and other guests who support our science and social studies curriculums. They have our BLAST program, which is run by the PTO, and mostly parents run these stations where they offer different opportunities and programs, such as Lego Learning, Science Labs, Arts and Crafts, and many other programs that kids would be interested in, but maybe don't have the opportunity to try on their own. So these amazing individuals support the students and adults at Taylor with matching T-shirts and a monthly treat trolley where families sign up to provide the staff with indulgences, such as gourmet cookies, donuts, smoothie bars, yogurt bars. And these days are such a hit, and the staff really looks forward to them each month as we are just overwhelmed by their thoughtfulness and generosity. Mike, you're going to hate this part, but it was a collective decision, not just me. Working alongside the PTO, there is another collaboration we need to mention, who is truly a role model to us all, and that is Mr. Stanton. And I want to let you know that if you come to Taylor School looking for him, don't go to his office because he most likely won't be there. Chances are, you will find him at bus duty, where he is greeting every child by name. He knows every child's name. He's making sure they are using their i's and h's. And you could also look at him in any classroom, but make sure you go to the rug because he's on the floor, reading and writing with kids. If it's lunchtime, there is a very strong possibility that he's cleaning a dirty table in the cafeteria and always making sure that hungry children are fed. Yes, the Taylor staff can all attest that when one person shines, we all shine. And we thank you, Mr. Stanton, for shining.
Thank you very much. The application, as I said, was quite an undertaking. I think I talked to Dr. Burdos at one point and said, I'm not sure what I actually decided to do here. It took, once again, collectively, hundreds of hours. I'd like to give a big shout out to the application team, Noel, Karen McKinnon, Deanna, Diane Noonan, Sharon, Jen, I suppose Kristen Walsh were on it. I also need to thank Kate Burke. She is a Taylor School parent who volunteered to be an editor. I gave her probably less than 24 hours to edit this, and she got it back to me within two hours, and it was amazing what she was able to find and do for us. And so once again, for me, it just speaks to the collaboration and the relationships that we have. Also, I was able to talk with Dr. Mello, who used to be our former assistant superintendent, and she sort of gave me some guidance and be able to look at it from a third-party point of view. But this wouldn't have been completed without Dr. Burrows. She spent countless hours with me, sat with me, helped me reword, retype, because we had many voices, but it had to be submitted with one voice. So Dr. Burrows was instrumental, and thank you, Dr. Burrows, for all that you did for this process as well. And what we'd like to just briefly do is just touch upon a couple of the highlights that were contained in the application as well.
Want to start with me? So I had the good fortune to work on the school climate and culture piece of the application. And I say good fortune because it really was just an opportunity to reflect on our school culture and climate. And there were so many academic pieces that were so wonderful to celebrate, but this was the time for us to really think about how we engage our students beyond academics sometimes, but also how we engage our families and the communities. And we got to highlight things like our buddy classes, our Big Tigers and Little Tigers, our Leadership Academy, our responsive classroom work that we've put into place. So we got to highlight so many of those wonderful things that we do to engage our students, I say beyond the academics, but that so much impacts the academics. We heard so much about our families and their engagement, and we again highlighted that all here. And then our leadership, both at the district level, we heard that in our friends, our friends, where we highlighted all of those people who had a part in this for us, but also at Taylor School and our leadership. And one thing that kept coming up was just this piece that spoke to relationships and collaboration. And as I was talking to Deanna and Diane about it today, I said, oh, this reminds me of a journal piece that one of my kindergarten students wrote. And this was a kindergartner that I had last year, and she wrote in her journal, "I love the Taylor School. It's not the classroom, it's the teachers and all my friends." And here, out of the voice of a kindergartner, she realized that this was about people and relationships, and that was really what was at the heart of school culture and climate. We're able to make students feel safe, valued, and supported so they can reach their potential, and it's because of the people. It's not about the classroom, the building, or anything else. It's about not just the teachers. She said teachers because that was her people, but it's about the people.
And so, that's hard to follow.[1240.13][1240.13](LAUGHTER). So now, with regard to curriculum and instruction, we really strive to just put the very best resources in front of our very talented teachers, whether it's locally curated units of study or a resource like Empowering Writers. We know it's not the curriculum that teaches the students, it's the teachers. We make room for teachers to hone their craft. That's the most important thing to us, I think, is for teachers to figure out who they are as teachers. And I feel like in Foxborough, that's a really important piece of our whole entire look at the programs that we put in front of teachers. We want them to hone their craft and their pedagogy. We've developed, as part of the MTSS Inclusive Instruction Academy, guaranteed access to learning for all of our students. We frame assessments as opportunities for growth. We assess students to instruct them. We use data to gain actionable insights and inform targeted instruction that removes the barriers to their learning. And like this thread and this theme that you've heard all night, we just value collaboration in our PLC time to have grade-level teachers and our curriculum specialists come together to reflect on best practices, use data to plan their instruction. And the biggest gift that we can give teachers is not just time, but it's time together. And so I think that we've really tried to build that in to the culture of all of our schools here in Foxborough. But it speaks to, I think, this theme of collaboration that you're hearing about tonight.
We also had one more thing over the last few years that we were fortunate to be able to spend a few years in the DESI Inclusive Practices Academy, where we really focus on universal design for instruction, universal design for learning. And a really big piece of that, and it could go on and on about this for a while, but the key element is that we are creating expert learners, kids who know how they learn best, that are strategic and goal-directed, purposeful and motivated, resourceful and knowledgeable. And that guides a lot of our thoughts about what's the barrier for kids, and we knock them down, and we work together to do that. But I think it's really important that you think in those same three areas that our administration, we are supported to also be teachers who are strategic and goal-directed, purposeful and motivated, and resourceful and knowledgeable. Through this collaboration time that has been set up, that we are given the support and the tools to work together to make that happen. That last page of the application, we were asked to boil it down to one thing, just one thing, that strategy or practice that has made us most instrumental in our school's success, and that was really difficult to do. But I think you've heard it over and over tonight, that the relationships that we've built allow this collaboration. So we've said it's collaboration, but it is because we have strong relationships and, again, the guidance that we have through all of the town has made a really big difference to be able to say that.
And so what's next? We are excited. In November, we are going to be heading to the national conference. Another difficult part of this process was we had to select one teacher or staff member to represent the entire school. I didn't want that, so I put it on to the teachers, and I asked them for nominations. And they couldn't have gone wrong, but they just selected a wonderful colleague to represent them. That's Mrs. Nancy Carin, she's fourth-grade teacher, so she'll be joining us, myself and Noel Hendrickson.[1459.86][1459.86](APPLAUSE). And so we're excited for that. That's in Washington, D.C., but we'll get to learn about what other schools do and bring back some practices as well. And then also, just continuing to celebrate, we'll be working with the PTO to sort of see how we can do. We'll get a plaque and a banner. That will come back. We'll have a whole school assembly and really trying to think of what we might be able to do for those students at a Hearn as well, because we want to include them. And just finally, just one reflection and growth. As I said at the beginning, you know, this is not the culmination, it's a celebration for us. And I think Dr. Burdos phrased it so well that when she talked about when one shines, we all shine. This truly is a collaborative effort. Since I've been here, I came on board. I had two wonderful colleagues in Michelle McCarthy and Peter Regan. 13 years later, I have Danielle Morrissey and Robert Worth. And I know the teachers across the schools. And it's, you know, we'd always talk about the BIT, but also at the Hearn and the high school. We're just incredibly fortunate to be in this district. So, you know, we're proud and honored to represent Foxborough. And I don't know if you have any questions.
Well, thank you so much. I really have no questions. You guys did such a thorough presentation. Thank you for sharing the application process because I never would have known how many hours and what went into it, so thank you for that, because that's probably one of the questions I would have asked. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
No, you guys did an amazing job.
Totally amazing. Not surprising, but amazing. Thank you.
Just like to, again, Secretary Cardona, as far as the National Education Secretary, one of, you know, the quotes and one of his press releases, it talked about National Blue Ribbon Schools really being led by leaders who articulate a clear vision of instructional excellence and holds high standards and talks about all of the things they brought and mentioned this evening, when it does come to, it is everyone, from the community to the parents that support, obviously, the students, the teachers, the staff. And it is having that vision and having everyone marching in the same direction. And when Mike did mention with the application at that time, I had to sign off, Mr. Pearson is the chair of the school committee, he had to sign off as well, and we talked about the application process and how daunting it was and the amount of time. I even got a call from some of the teachers on a Sunday that were working on the application and asking some questions. And that just shows the commitment to that arduous process that took place, and it's so well-deserved. And it is the work of many, and it is one of our schools shining, but it is all of our schools shining as a result of that. So thank you and congratulations, and I know you will represent us well in Washington, D.C. in November.
Thank you very much.[1636.01][1636.01](APPLAUSE).
That is a tough act to follow.[1638.01][1638.01](LAUGHTER). Very happy one, though. Next up, Dr. Burdos, your superintendent update.
So earlier today, we had a flu clinic, thanks to our partners in public health and our own nurse leaders, Jen Rosenberg heading that up with our public health partners. And we had 167 flu administration vaccines that took place, which was a fabulous turnout. So that was wonderful. And just, you know, kudos to Ms. Rosenberg for what she is always doing and thinking ahead as far as all schools in the greater community. And we were at a district attorney meeting this morning and reaching out and even to the charter school and being able to have them come and join as well. So being really inclusive as far as that wide reach. So that took place today, very successful. Just as a reminder, on Wednesday of next week, there will be a virtual event. That's a Project Safe Childhood presentation for parents on keeping kids safe and secure online. You do need to register for that. Once you register, you'll get the link to be able to participate. And that's going to be Social Media 101. It's going to be gaming, digital footprint, really victim support, protecting children against online predators as well. So that was first brought to us as far as letting us know that it was going to take place by Chief Grace. So again, it's just another example of that partnership that we have with our own public safety partners, so we appreciate that. On Thursday of next week, Junior Parent Night, that might get mentioned by our student representatives as well. And then one other reminder, technology update, that annual verification for parents to please mention that at the last meeting to make sure that they update that. That's really important. Thank you to Sarah, to you, and to Brent to be able to be a participant for the NEAS visit that's coming up. So after the last meeting, I'd asked for help there. And then the only other thing that I, oh, two other things, actually. One, I want to point out the tennis courts. So I have pictures here from a drone, the before and the after. Just, it's amazing, the resurfacing and the color, so I will pass those down. So I know that we had a community member reach out to me a year ago, asking, I had mentioned this at the last meeting, and everything, you know, takes a little bit of time and planning. And so really excited for the high school and for the tennis team and then the greater community to be able to use. I had mentioned this at the last meeting. And everything, you know, takes a little bit of time and planning. And so really excited for the high school and for the tennis team, and then the greater community to be able to use the tennis courts. It's just beautiful. Take a drive by and take a look.
Can we get a zoom in? Can we get a zoom in on this? Like, you don't have to be close up to see.
It's quite a difference.
This is amazing. Thank you to everyone involved.
And then the only other mention, and it's something to think about because I know that both Brent and Rob are not able to be here this evening, is we're going to need representatives from the school committee for negotiations for this year, for the teachers' negotiations and for the educational assistance. So in the past, we've had two members on each of those teams. Because if one of you was not able to participate, then the other is there because the contract is with the school committee. It's, you know, myself is there, Dr. Burrows is there. Karen will be there. But it is with the school committee, so we need the school committee members at the table. So it ends up being one to two meetings a month. It's typically 3:30 to 5-ish. And we're looking at starting that, at least with the teachers, it looks to be like the first week of November and trying to coordinate that. So if you can kind of think about, like, your level of commitment and what that might look like for two, for teachers, and two, for educational assistance.
Great. Sounds amazing. Thank you for all of that. All right, so we are going to move on over to school committee, student representatives. And Stevie, this is your first official meeting. So Stevie Straham and Yasmeen Bagosa. It's all yours.
So to introduce myself, I'm Stevie Strahan. I'm a junior. I've been a part of the school council since freshman year. So things happening. We just had the Spanish exchange students in. It was really good. I'm a part of the group who will be going to Spain. We did some pumpkin carving with them. They got a tour of Foxborough by one of the high school students. And it was just really great for everyone. We also have a mural that's being started for the windows of the downstairs library at the high school. That's going really good. It's a student-led project where we're trying to get everyone involved. We have a lot of just positive words up right now, but we're trying to get people to start their drawings and symbols of stuff that is positive and supportive soon. So far, that's all that I've really got for this year because it's still early on in the year. But more to be coming soon.
Also, there's homecoming coming up later on this year, or later on this month. We had a meeting for student council yesterday, and we talked about spirit weeks and like how there's like many different things that we can't do because of different stereotypes and different, like offensive to other people. We did choose like some of the basic ones that we always do throughout the years. Also, for homecoming dance, it's going to be October 19th. It's from 7 to 8. And it's homecoming. Yeah, that's all I have to say today.
Thank you so much. Awesome. Did you say homecoming is seven, from 7 to 8?
7 to 9.
Sorry, 7 to 9. Okay, that's what I thought. Just double-checking. Thank you. All right. We're going to move right along to the K-5 Standards-Based Report Cards. This is something, this is the update on the process standards. And we're going to invite the working group up here. And this is something we've been talking about for quite a while. So kind of exciting stuff.
Sure. So as our team gets settled up there, I just want to point out a couple of things that you have in your packet. You have a memo in your packet that just reminds you of the history of where we've been and why we're here this evening to speak with you about the process standards. We did have that Grade 5 Standards-Based Report Cards Working Group working for the past two years. And we are implementing that Grade 5 Standards-Based Report Card in this current school year. As a part of that work, it was identified through that work that we needed to first develop process standards, which are your student work habits. Examples of that might be completing homework, working collaboratively with peers in the classroom, asking questions, responding to feedback, taking notes, coming to class prepared. So those learner expectations are what we call process standards. It came to light during that Grade 5 Standards-Based Report Card group that our process standards across the elementary school, including Grade 5, needed to be revisited. So the team members that we have up here are a part of a process standards working group that worked this summer. If you can click to that next slide. So we had a good team working on the process standards this summer. It was intentionally representative across grades K through 6. We had some of our literacy specialists and some of our specialist teachers as well, including Zach as well, who has been with us since the beginning of our developing a Grade 5 Standards-Based Report Card. So it was, it was great to have Zach a part of that work. And I am going to hand it off to the team and have them talk with you about what they've developed. And at the end of this, we will be asking for your vote to approve those process standards.
I'm Zach Diorcy. I'm the grades 5 and 6 Spanish teacher at Ahern. And as Dr. Burrows said, I've done a lot of work specifically with the Grade 5 transition to standards-based grading. I love standards-based grading. This is like so my thing. So I was happy to continue my work with standards-based grading, talking about the process standards. A little background, just to make sure we have a full vision of what we're talking about when we talk about a standards-based report card. There are three major elements of a standards-based report card. There are the two types of standards, that being content standards and process standards. And they're both governed by a common grading scale, which tells the student, the family, how well a student is approaching or meeting or exceeding the standard, whether it be a content standard or a process standard. That's the 4-3-2-1 that we have here in Foxborough. So we've got two types of standards. We've got content standards and process standards. Dr. Burrows did a great job sort of delineating between the two just a few minutes ago. But what I really, really love about standards-based grading is that content standards are separated from those work habits, studentship, process standards. In traditional grading, a lot of times those two things are lumped together and students are often penalized in that cumulative grade for things like studentship, where that doesn't really say how well they're mastering material and approaching content standards. That says everything about those studentship skills. And being able to split those apart gives a, just such a well-rounded view of the student as a whole, both academically and as a student. So like Dr. Burrows said, this summer, we focused on the process standards, which are those studentship behavior standards, making them more asset-based instead of deficit-based. Because we want to be positive and we want to recognize all of the things that our amazing students are doing and not drawing attention necessarily to what they're not doing.
Exactly. And to add to that is the fact that we were looking at what was age-appropriate of what they were doing. So if we look at the old standard, so you can actually click to the next one. If we were looking at the old process standards that we were doing in K to 4, we've been looking at the content standards already, like you were doing in Grade 5. So for content standards, we were looking at that, like what are they able to do at the end? But this is our old, and I say old as of like just this June we were using, the behaviors to support learning and the work habits. But I mean, look at that. That's all of the behaviors that they're looking at. So if you look at a lot of those, we looked at it and we said, well, we really need to vertically align this. So it's basically K to 4 and including 5th grade. It's all the way through. We're looking at the same standard, but then we're looking at them developmentally. So what is appropriate for a kindergartner to be doing? And what is appropriate for that 5th grader to be demonstrating? So we looked at the vertical standards first. And then we all came together and we were like, well, we should have common language across all those standards. And we narrowed it down. And we'll talk a little bit further after that. Sorry. Stick to my... So the students were scored on so many, just looking at behavior and looking at work habits. But a lot of these are focusing on that negative and not that positive. And also not looking at, like, we're talking about social-emotional learning and how students can transition and better themselves and make mistakes and the challenges that they face. So we wanted to kind of take all these and combine them. Because if you look at some of them, manages materials and belongings, transitions well, listens to just directions. A lot of those we could combine were classroom routines. These are classroom routines, transitions, things like that. So why are we saying it over and over again? So we definitely needed to align it. We definitely needed to align it for social-emotional learning, which was nice that we had. Also, we had Tanika on this board, who is our, my God.
School psychologist.
Thank you. School psychologist. The name just went right out of there. But it was nice to kind of look at it from different angles. So we were looking at it from the academic perspectives. We were looking at speech and language. So it was nice to kind of see different visions of that student. So we did take this and we, you can go to the... We went, we narrowed it down to six standards. So basically, looking at just six. And I'm going to let you...
Absolutely. So yeah, so we wanted to kind of come up with these six umbrella areas for, as Wendy was saying, like, what can we kind of, you know, use these standards to cover the work habits that help students be successful learners and access the content in the best way? So these are the six, some of the standards that we came up with, that we, you know, continue to align vertically to the additional levels as well. So the, although sometimes the wording may be the same or sometimes the wording may shift, the expectations are kind of shifting developmentally as well. We also, as Wendy said, Tanika Ortiz, school psychologist, was part of the working group. And she advocated for us to consider the elements that are reported on in the panorama system that educators are using to look at their students' social-emotional skills and development. And how can we capture some of those pieces with these process standards as well? So here, you can see that we have three of the standards that we came up with. And we also have these guiding questions that will assist with teacher scoring. We liked adding in these questions to help ensure that there's a common understanding for what the standard means and for when an educator is reflecting upon their scoring of the standards, these are the types of behaviors they're reflecting upon. Am I observing this or am I not observing this? And, you know, as Wendy and Zach said, when we're looking at children using certain skills effectively or responsively, we're looking at how are they self-advocating? How are they persevering through their academic frustration? We're also looking at like developmentally appropriate strategies to solve conflicts. There's also a standard where we consider their regulation needs. And, you know, knowing that, you know, we have some students with neurodivergent profiles, are they able to access regulating strategies to get them back into a zone where they can access their work? So these guiding questions are a really important piece to the report card. They aren't going to be like printed on the report card. They're meant to be that reflection piece and to also serve as common language to facilitate any parent conversations where if a student is having challenges with one of these process standards, the teacher can very easily say, you know, these are the reasons why your child received this particular score. Here's what I am seeing, here's what I'm not seeing. And help guide those conversations a little bit for folks. So that was the presentation, summary of our work. And if anybody has any questions, we're happy to...
First of all, thank you so much. That's a lot of work. And we appreciate everything you've done as far as what you've done. But also, you've definitely brought it back to us and made us feel comfortable with the process all along. And the one thing that I, it's just a comment, really not a question, but I love your excitement. Everybody who's come to this table and talked about standards-based report cards are just so excited. And I love that because it's great to see people get excited about what they do and to feel positive about it. It just, it just makes it all that much better when everybody feels good about something. So just really thank you, sorry. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
No, I just want to say thank you for the guiding questions because at first, when I looked through, I was like, I'm worried that the teachers might get a little lost or confused. But the guiding questions really make it super easy for them. So thank you.
Awesome. That's good, good to hear.
No?
No.
Okay. All right.
I'll just add that this group did an amazing job and they surprised me with what they were able to develop and what they were able to really make, make those process standards make sense vertically. Really, the point of a standards-based report card is to give quality, clear feedback to families. And they really achieved that. They just hit it out of the park with the work that they did this summer. And I'm very grateful for what they did. And I think our district will really appreciate it. I think our families will be clear what those expectations are. And the guiding questions were just the best idea to develop those guiding questions and really help our teachers kind of make sense of, well, what do we mean by this? We're, you know, starting off from the gate with those common understandings and those common questions. And I think it's really going to make a big difference. So I'm really grateful for this group and for everything that you did and everything that the folks that weren't able to make it this evening were able to accomplish in such a short period of time. So thank you.
For sure. And look, just to piggyback on that, I love the equity those guiding questions create because all students are different and they all learn differently. And I love those questions because it just made it, for every student, you could individualize it, but it also became, you know, it just leveled the playing field. I love it. Thanks.
It takes something, I think, that can be very subjective and adds some objectivity to it where it's, so it takes some of that potential bias out of the equation.
Also, like, kind of teased out. What are you looking? And then maybe from there, what do you need? What does the child need? First strategies for regulation. You know, different things are kind of teasing it out. You know, different things are kind of teasing it out, so yeah.
I love that. So I did just want to, I did forget to announce that you probably noticed, there's fewer of us at the table. We are going to make a vote on this and Rob Canfield and Brent Ruder are not able to be with us today, but we're still going to move ahead with a vote. If we are ready, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the K through five standard-based report cards as presented here in today's presentation.
Second.
Any further discussion by anyone, questions, comments? All right, all in favor of adopting this? And it is three, zero, zero. Congratulations. Thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Thank you.
And thank you all. So at this point, we are going to just have a quick conversation. I think we touched on it. We may have touched on it in the community update a few meetings ago, but we just wanted to talk, Karen, maybe you can talk a little bit about the school committee representative to the audit committee, what that role looks like. We would need a community member as far as I understand, but if you don't mind, could you just kind of share a little bit about it so that we know kind of what our task is, trying to find a representative, please?
My understanding is there's a few basic duties that go along with being part of the committee. And the first would be the town is looking for a new audit firm. So that would give the schools a voice in determining the new audit firm. It would be just, you'd be part of that committee. So with audits, oftentimes you do have to go out to bid with it, but then you'd have a voice in it for the schools. I think that's important to have a good audit firm for the town because the, the town has the ability to choose the audit, but they, that audit firm also does an annual report, which is the audit that I would be doing with them. And they also will pick parts of, the town will normally pick different parts of the school for the school to give them information on. They might pick a few grants and they'll ask you for different information on the grants. So they might pick a revolving fund that they would like you to give information on. So it's important to have a good audit firm. For me, I find an audit, it, it should be something to help you, not, not hurt you for somebody like me, because if you do have something that they're talking to you about, you just have learned something for the future. So you know that, things that you should improve on. You hope to not have any findings at all, but when you do get a finding, it's meant to be able to help you, not hurt you. So the other thing would be the committee would also review these audits. So you'd have the opportunity to review the town audits and see, you know, how they did with the various audits, the different recommendations that the audit firm will give for various areas. Again, very helpful. And then the third thing would be to review the town policies for finance prior to them being implemented. So again, you would want the schools to have a voice in that, to be able to have a little bit input if they were going to change any of the finance policies for the town. So that's the three that I would say the basic things that you would be determining to be on that committee.
My understanding about the position is that it typically is a three-year position, but because somebody had to step back, this is just going to be the remainder of their term, so it's only going to be a one-year term. Do you have any idea what kind of time commitment, just while we're having this conversation?
Um, let's see.
I was speaking to someone.
It's really not that heavy of a lift. It needs to be a resident of Foxborough, someone who's got kind of a financial acumen to be able to do all of the things and provide that voice, as Karen has mentioned. It, it's, it's meeting once or twice. I, I think at the most.
The reports come out annually, so it's not like you're continually looking at these reports.
Okay.
The, normally when they're choosing an audit firm, they usually get like a three-year contract to be the audit firm. So again, it's not like you're choosing a different firm every year.
Okay.
And then town policies, I mean, it's not often. Normally you would review your policies, just like the school committee is reviewing the policies for the school. So I don't think it's a real heavy lift, but I think it's important, especially if you're about to, to hire a new audit firm. You definitely want to make sure you pick an audit firm that will represent you well for the three years. Normally it's three years that you do. So I wouldn't say heavy, heavy. I think a negotiation would be.
But important, not heavy, but important.
Very important, yeah.
Valuable. So, um, okay, so we want some of, somewhat of a financial background here in town. I guess, any, any questions from Michelle or Nate on this? Nate?
My only question, is there like a timetable or a deadline to find someone for this position? Or what happens if it goes unfilled?
We've had that in the past, where even in the last several years. So if it goes unfilled, it's unfilled. It's, it's just what it is, to be honest, because it's been hard to be able to get somebody that's interested to come forward. So if they are, to reach out to you, Sarah, as the chair, would be an important step. And as far as more of the time commitment, if they needed to know specifically, I think that's more on the town side that we would need to kind of iron that out.
Sure, absolutely. Any other questions on this? No? Okay, I felt like it was important for us to have a discussion. You know, hopefully somebody will be interested or if any interested parties would like to contact me, we'd be happy to have another discussion further on. Right now, we, we haven't had any interest or anyone come forward. So that's sort of where we're at. We're just, was sort of just a temperature check and a discussion. So thank you very much for bringing that information about the role to the table and hopefully somebody out there will want to join, join the club. So thank you for that. Moving right along, we're going to talk about the MIAA rewards. So MIAA rewards are something that I have, it's, I've been a thorn in everyone's side about the MIAA rewards over the years. It's something that Bill and I started, we kind of went on a journey together when I started on the school committee three years ago. And it's, it's something that was, you know, we were able every year to kind of get in just under the wire and get all the classes and everything fulfilled. Today I went to, I have the paper here. Today I did go to a meeting with the Massachusetts Independent Insurance Association representative here at Town Hall. So I was able to get a little bit better grasp. And this is really for my fellow committee members, Ian, Karen, she was there as well. But just talking a little bit about what we need to be doing. So a lot of times what we do, just to put it out there in the public, or a lot of times what myself, Michelle, and I believe Nate's participated, will do different webinars. Sometimes we'll go do classes. Sometimes MIAA will have different trainings. And if you're within that platform or within that subject of the trainings that they're looking for, like we'll be going to the, Michelle and I will be going to Massachusetts Association of School Committees Conference. And during that time, we'll be taking multiple classes and trainings at the end of our time at MASC convention. We'll submit that to MIAA to let them look at it and we may be able to get some rewards. There is a $10,000, up to $10,000 grant and different rewards offered as rebates to insurance. Ultimately, it saves us money off the budget, just to let the public know kind of what, what I'm always talking about with the MIAA rewards and why it's important. Budget's a big piece of what we do, so I thought it was important to, to just kind of have a quick discussion about it. But one thing that's changing this year is in the past, it's been a get it in by May 11th, you know, a deadline situation. Now it's a use it or sort of lose it. Get your rewards in because there's a finite amount of grant money available and when that's gone, it's gone. So there's no more sort of waiting till the deadline, that crunch time at the end. It's, it's sort of like, let's, let's chip away at it as a team as we can. So just for the committee's knowledge, Katie Lang, who's, I just want to take a minute and say how amazing she is. She's sort of like everywhere, all the time, all at once to everyone. She, she really plays a great role in the town. She's going to get us a list of the webinars, which you can do very easily on your laptop. You can do some of them on your phone. And, and I believe we can get, I think it's eight, eight or 12 different webinars that we can get that are specific to schools that we can take. We can do, sometimes they're an hour, sometimes they're a half hour. But, you know, we can kind of chip away at those. And then there are different classes and courses that come up as well through MIAA. So not to talk about it too much, but this is what I'm always chatting about and I just wanted to kind of bring it to light. And Karen, I, if you had anything you wanted to add, because truth be told, Bill did do a lot of what we, you know, honestly, we did a lot of talking about all the things Bill did and all the great things he did, but the MIAA rewards is something that he did a lot of, a lot of the lifting on that as well. So I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add?
Well, at the meeting, for me, something that was interesting was that you don't necessarily have to just do the webinars that they're offering. Some of them that you're doing on your own may give you some of that, it may be used for those rewards as well.
Yes.
Because we were talking about some, I had done a food service one that they said they sent it in, that might be something that would be. So it doesn't have to be just the MIAA ones, even though there seems to be an awful lot of nice ones. I saw some of them. But you can also do some of the, that you're doing on your own. So darkness to light was one that was.
Yep, we talked about that.
Yeah, I, I think those are good examples. And that was like, to your point, as far as I would be talking about a school safety training that we had just done with the FBI as an example. And then Bill would say, can you get the agenda and what you, what that, how many hours it was and what took place and who it was for, because they need to be able to submit that, so.
Right, we, we did that in a previous district that I was on. Like even some of the safety trainings that they were doing with extended day and such, we would submit and see if that would, you know, CPRs and stuff like that, so.
I think that's great. So thank you to Katie Lang and thank you, Karen. And a preemptive thank you to the school committee for anything that you guys can do alongside.
Participate early and often.
Yeah, there you go. Participate early and often. So thanks for, for once again, listening to me drone on about the MIAA rewards. And we're, last but not least, community update. Would anyone like to give us any community updates? Nate? Michelle, anything going on with CPAC?
Uh, yeah, CPAC is going to have their, oh yeah, of course, sorry. CPAC is going to have their first meeting of the year next Wednesday at seven o'clock. It's a Zoom meeting. If you look on their Facebook page, you can find the information there and the Zoom link there. But it's, yeah, that will be our first meeting of the year, big one.
Dr. Brooks?
All set.
Karen? Yasmin? Stevie? Actually, I, Dr. Donovan did send me a message that the homecoming game is October 18th. So homecoming dance is the 19th, the game's the 18th, so that's exciting. I think, I think that's, oh, we do have the Halloween parade coming up in the town for the recreation. So if anybody, I believe it's October 26th. Thank you. October 26th, there were the, around the common, the roads will be closed. It'll be really exciting. We always have, I mean, there are literally probably close to 1,000 dressed up children that'll be really exciting around town. And once again, I'd like to thank all the National Honor Society and community warriors, students that continue to volunteer their time to make these programs and really add to these programs and help make them happen. So just always want to give a shout out. I really appreciate the volunteerism. It's nice to see. So anyway, anyone else have anything else? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor of adjournment? Three, zero, zero. Have a great night, everyone.